So, uh, the order of tonight's business is that first we have a public hearing for the Pepper Woods Properties LLC project. And once the public hearing has been completed, we'll go into our traditional planning board meeting. And we will then again, visit the Pepperwood Properties LLC project. And then we will have two new presentations for a project on West State Street. And then we'll finish the rest of our agenda after that point. So that's the order of business tonight. I see Craig is joining us now by video as well. Uh, so recognizing a quorum in place, in person, in city hall, I'd like to declare the public hearing for Pepperwood Properties LLC. Site plan number oh four dash twenty-two, twenty-eight zero one, West State Street in session. Uh, could you read the role, please?
Yeah, Benyon.
Here.
Mark Sabella.
Here.
Mary Fay.
Here.
Reed McElfrush.
Yes.
Craig Paulson.
Here.
Thomas Barnes.
Here. And could you read the legal notice, please?
Legal notice, public hearing, application of Pepperwood Properties LLC, twenty-eight oh one West State Street, Olean, New York. Uh, September twenty-six, six thirty PM, only in municipal building and a Zoom public hearing and meeting link via the City of Olean's website. Under the planning board page, please take notice that in accordance with the provisions of section nine point one point six of the zoning law of the City of Olean. A public hearing will be held on the date and time specified above in connection with an application that has been filed and received by the planning board of the City of Olean. For a preliminary site plan review and approval of a project at the above noted location. A copy of the preliminary site plan application is on file for inspection in the city clerk's office of the City of Olean. Frank Caputo, City Clerk, Carrie Kerper Program Coordinator.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I, I would, uh, note that the purpose of the public hearing is to help inform the public about the project that is in front of us, the site plan application that's in front of us. And, uh, we'd like to be able to answer questions that the, the public has and receive their comments on the project. And, uh, uh, when the applicant is, is present with us, uh, to, to get any answers back from the, from the applicant for the public. So, our, our process is that, uh, if you are here from the general public, uh, wanted to make a question or make a comment or ask a question. Please raise your hand and I'll call on you and I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record. And then, um, ask you to go ahead with your comment. So, uh, at, at this point, are there any members of the public here who would like to, uh, ask a question or make a comment?
Yeah. Check, go ahead.
Uh, Anthony Howard, one six seven one Park Street, Olean, New York. Uh, my question is, who am I asking the question to?
Uh, the board.
Oh, okay. Um, the, the original Kmart plan came with, it went through litigation and it came with, there's a wooded space between Park Street and the Kmart building. The street was not supposed to be used for tractor trailers and the wooded, wooded spaces supposed to be left there of, in the original plan with Kmart, with Benderson Development. And I was wondering if that was going to continue with the new. Whoever's, are there your plans or?
No. I don't see Corian.
Corian, no, I've been looking for him.
There, there's no indication in the site plan that.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't seen, I, I, I haven't seen the site plan, but I know what the original, original agreement was and it did go through litigation.
Yeah, uh, it, as I was saying, there's no indication in the site plan that is in front of us that there's going to be any tractor trailer access to the east end of the building. All the tractor trailer access comes on the west end of the building and around, around the back from the, uh, access from the west, not the east.
I think that's opposite, Tom.
No, it's opposite, it will be east.
Park Street on the west side.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually in Allegheny.
I, I know. What I'm saying is that the site plan does not show any access to the building for tractor trailers on the west side of the building. That's what I'm saying.
Right, right, correct, right.
All the access to the, uh, uh, for, for tractor trailers to the loading docks on the east end of the building and on the south side of the building.
This is actually on the east. And it was agreed upon with the neighborhood, hired a lawyer. I wasn't there yet.
Okay.
And, um, this is supposed to stay, or was in the original plan.
So, so it is not even in this plan set.
Okay.
What's highlighted is.
Okay.
So that helps.
I think so.
So i- in other words, what we're, what we have in front of us to prove does not include any tractor trailer access on the, on the, uh, on the west end of the building.
Okay.
So, uh, if, if, if they're going to do tractor trailer access on the west end of the building within the city boundaries, that would be something that we would be able to, uh, prescribe through code enforcement and the, in the, in the city police. And if they wanted to do it in the town of Allegheny, that's outside of our jurisdiction anyway. So. But you know, what they're showing us and what they described to us in terms of, uh, tractor trailer access to the, uh, Hobby Haven loading dock, which is on the south side of the building, uh, that would come around the west, west side of the building. So that's what we're working with. Are you satisfied with that, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Is there someone else? Yes, yes ma'am?
Uh, my name is Leanne Denise. I live at one twenty-one South Twenty-Sixth Street. Um, and my only concern is questioning if they're going to be looking at doing anything with the traffic pattern or doing a traffic study. Uh, we have quite a bit of congestion in that area as it is. Um, so I was just wondering, um, I'm all for all the things that are coming, but if they're looking at any way to, um, limit the, uh, problem for people getting out of their personal, you know, their, uh, normal streets of access. So, you know, we're coming and going out of Twenty-Sixth Street now is very difficult, um, turning either way. Um, and just with additional, uh, buildings and restaurants and whatever down there. Um, if they would be looking at a traffic study, changing light patterns, adding a light somewhere, uh, something like that. Uh, when I'm coming home from work, it takes two to three lights at Schultz light just to turn left because of the traffic, um, that's already there. So, um, just that's our main concern is that traffic pattern.
Carrie, do you want to fill that, the traffic study aspect of this?
Uh, yeah, prior to the meeting started, I had explained that the city didn't require a traffic study be done. Due to the fact, um, from code enforcement's review and determination, because it was filling the commercial space that was previously existing with the Kmart. So it didn't affect that location.
And it was our, is our, it was our, uh, our, this board's, um, evaluation during the environmental review process, which has already been completed, that, um, the, the additional traffic from this, uh, uh, new retail operation would not, would not, uh, present any significant adverse impacts related to traffic impacts. Now, um, my suggestion to you is that if you find, um, with this and with, uh, the other, uh, two projects that are you know, potentially coming online as a consequence of, uh, uh, the two projects, the two other projects that we have being presented to us uh, later on in the meeting. If, if those, if, if you, if you find that, uh, traffic can, is, is getting increasingly more difficult, what I would do is, uh, contact your alderman and ask your alderman to, uh, to propose a traffic study and, um, take, take a look at the impacts in terms of access and, uh, uh, to and from, uh, the side streets. Now, I, I know several years back, New York State DOT uh, did a traffic study on the entire corridor. I don't know whether or not that was an element of the state's traffic study. But, uh, if, if there needs to be, uh, uh, another study undertaken, then the council should be the one that would move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and that was, uh, something else to know is, um, it, Tom, I had said prior to the meeting and, you know, just to go on the record. Cora is, um, I had asked, you know, that they speak during this public meeting, so then I can also relay the sentiments and um, the, the concern to our new public works director and see if there's something that he could go and review with the current data that's online with DOT and see if there's something that we could address, whether it be, I mean, I understand there is something more significant than just the timing of a light. However, it would start the conversation with the right department and then he can also, you know, get with the council president and or the mayor. If, you know, to address that and possibly have that, um, study updated with the Department of Transportation.
That sounds like a great approach, Carrie.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
Cause I, I think, I think with these other projects moving forward.
And updating.
That is not a good area right here. I mean, you know, just, so I think that, I don't know if the consort or DPW really has that.
Yeah, that's more.
I think they really need to look at that whole.
Sure.
You know, especially since they've narrowed that down. You've got two lanes, you know, a two lane and then you got a, that one narrow lane right there.
And maybe we should refer to what it was because, I mean, when that got changed, I expressed my complete in order concern and displeasure for the change in it, but.
Yeah.
I hope not.
Yeah, yeah, money, cause that's, uh, you know, we got this other project.
Right, right, absolutely.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's gonna be a while.
So I, that will be helpful and I will, um, relay that information, but if you would also in turn contact your alderman as well.
Great, great comments and great considerations. Are, are there other questions or comments from the public? I'd like to note that, um, per state law, this is the, the public's, uh, opportunity to make, uh, comments or questions. So once we close the public hearing, um, your opportunity for doing that is over. So, don't be shy. I guess that's what I'm saying. This is your opportunity, uh, to, to step forward and, and ask questions or make comments. We, we want to hear from you. That's why we hold. So I'll, I'll ask one final time if there are any comments or questions. Okay, I, I'm not hearing any, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
We are agreed.
Okay, uh, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That's Carrie. Okay, uh, let's move.
Thank you.
Do you want me to email to you?
We should mention to them that, that.
Well, you're welcome.
We're gonna approve this later on, if they want to say.
Now we're going right into the regular meeting to discuss it. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tom. Sorry.
Okay. Recognizing a quorum, I'd like to declare the, the, uh, planning board meeting, uh, for today open. Please show the same persons, uh, board members present. And, uh, see. First item is, uh, reading an approval of the September twelfth meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mark and Gia.
Okay, any discussion, any revisions?
I, I had a question just for clarity on, uh, it's, uh, page three, near the end. Uh, where it notes Mr. Barnes inquired about excavating project on Homer Street. Is that Homer or is it on Franklin or Johnson?
Franklin. It's the corner of Johnson and Franklin.
Right, I think we should.
Isn't that Mr. Sabella that inquired about that?
Actually, I think it was me.
No, I think, but.
It was Tom. Yeah, it was about the cleanup, the brownfield cleanup.
Yeah, I mentioned what was going on. I initially, I think, asked.
Okay, we can change it.
Okay. So those two revisions. Any, anything else? Okay, uh, the motion with those two revisions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Our first item of all business, Pepperwood Properties LLC, site plan number four dash twenty-two, twenty-eight oh one, West State Street. Been through this, this looks pretty straightforward, actually. The only condition I think we were talking about is, uh, downward shielded, uh, night sky pole lighting. Is there anything else? Is there any other condition that we were talking about?
Can't you just leave a condition that you leave the wooded area alone?
It's not in the city. We can't condition property outside the city limits.
It's Allegheny. We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could say it, but I don't think it would hold up anywhere.
And they've, they've got the existing, uh,
I thought it was.
loading dock access with access from the east. I don't think they'd want to go to the expense of doing anything else.
Great. I mean, there, there's only, what, what is it, like, uh, a five foot setback on the east side toward, to the city line? Is that, is that what it is?
Exactly.
Certainly not enough for a drive aisle. They need to go into the town. You know, for a, a drive aisle and to swing around, swing way, way around that, so.
Yeah, I just asked, cause I think he was also stating that they can't do anything with the wooded section that has to remain un, unchanged. That's why I asked that.
Yeah, but you know, it, I, I agree with you. It would be nice if we could do something about that, but since the trees are in the, in the town, we really can't, so. Anything else? All right, I, I, unless, uh, the board has any other issues you'd like to bring forward on this, I and entertain a motion to approve this as submitted with the, the one condition regarding the pole lighting.
Reading Craig.
Craig agrees.
Okay, maiden second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move into our two projects. Uh, the first one under new businesses, uh, Olean twenty-twenty LLC site plan number oh five dash twenty-two, twenty-eight ten, West State Street. Is someone here from the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Wasson with Elec Development. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposed retail plaza at twenty-eight ten West State Streets. Twenty-eight ten West State Street is in front of the Holiday Park Center, which is, uh, located nearby the West State Street, uh, Independence Drive intersection in between Perkins Restaurants. And I believe that is a liquor store next door. Uh, on site, we are looking to, uh, construct a twenty-six hundred square foot, uh, Starbucks. And, uh, across, uh, the parking lots, there'll be a future pad site for additional retail building. It'll be, uh, thirty-six hundred-ish square feet. So you guys have some hard copies as well. So in our, uh, application package, we did include, uh, two renderings of the proposed Starbucks. Like I mentioned, it'd be a single story. Uh, it will feature, uh, storefront glass on the West State Street elevation and then on the east elevation. It'll have black brick wrapping around that elevation as well. Uh, the signature Starbucks wood siding above the canopy and then, uh, gray CMU in the black, uh, the back of the building and behind the brick as well. Uh, there will be a drive-through on the west side of the building, uh, had queuing for approximately twenty-five cars. Uh, Starbucks in the future retail pad site will share a parking lot that has approximately forty-six, uh, forty-six spaces, including four handicap spaces. Uh, the parking lots will be interconnected with Holiday Park Center. Uh, this will allow additional curb cut access along West State Streets and out, out onto Independence Drive as well. Uh, does the board have any questions?
Yeah, that was my, uh, my question was to say, is the queuing of the, uh, the drive-through, they will be able to get added to the?
Yeah, so if they come back around through the driveline here.
Yeah.
They can break here.
Yeah.
That is going to line up with the existing, uh, parking lots for Holiday Park Center. So they can come back through and actually right here on the edge of the plan. We actually, on the second page here, they're behind it, strong C one oh, C one oh one on the plan. Shows the overall site and it shows how it'll cut, uh, connect into the Holiday Park Center and come out, out, um, to, uh, Independence there on the west side.
Okay. Cause I know they will help with queuing because I know up the street, of course, with the importance, it, it, it is terrible queuing.
Yeah, queuing in the mornings will be the busy time for them, like always, like all coffee shops.
And in one or the other end of the town, forget it. It's, that's, that was, uh, but, okay, yeah, that, that, I think that will help alleviate some of that.
Yeah, we'll have, there will be.
Through that parking lot.
Yeah, there will be signage up there to help with that as well.
Yeah.
Going through it. Okay.
Yeah.
Carrie, one of the things that I'd like to, uh, to note is that the zoning permit application, uh, mentions only the Starbucks element. It doesn't, it doesn't specifically state the thirty-six hundred and fifty square foot pad element for the two future buildings or the, the, the one future building that allows the two businesses. And, and what I, I'd suggest that you do is you take a copy of that, um, site plan application and handwrite in that and have, uh, have jury sign that, you know, initial those, uh, those changes. So we have, uh, uh, something in writing that, that specifies, uh, both buildings on the site as part of the zoning permit application.
I'm doing it right now.
While she's doing that, you know, I would note that, uh, the, uh, uh, the commercial property back of that is Holiday Park Center and that's also owned by Elecott Development. A- as you, you might recall, uh, across the street, when we were looking at the, uh, Chipotle's and the urgent care. One of the things that I suggested would, was that there be some sort of an easement or access agreement, uh, to get through the adjacent property owner's parking lot. And here, because, uh, this, this, uh, site that we're looking at and Holiday Park Center are both owned by the same applicant, uh, it would seem like there might not be a need for an access agreement or an easement uh, to get to that, uh, independent square access lane. Um, or to use the parking lot for, uh, overflow parking, should it be needed. And, and I, I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the board, uh, to make a finding of, of that, uh, lack of necessity because of the circumstances of the, of the single ownership. But I would recommend that Elecott consider, um, putting something like that in place so that if they ever, uh,
We actually do have that in place already.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Could you provide a copy of that?
Uh, yeah, I can ask our attorney for a copy.
All right, then I guess we don't need the finding then, Carrie.
Okay, noted.
Okay.
Do we want to ask, um, for the parking spaces to be changed to the nine foot by twenty foot per code?
No, I think, um, Tom, do you want me to address the nine by twenty as opposed to the nine by eighteen?
Well, I, I would just want to point out that we have, what is it, a twenty-five foot drive aisle? And if we went, if we went to a, uh, a nine by twenty that on, on both sides of the, of the parking lot, that would take the drive aisle down to, uh, twenty-one feet. And, uh, you know, I'm talking with, um, code enforcement this afternoon and, and with Carrie also. And, uh, code enforcement feels that it's, uh, more important to have the drive aisle than it is to have the, uh, nine by twenties. And, uh, Carrie pointed out in our conversation today that, uh, although nine by twenty is the city code, nine by eighteen is the state code. So, um, so what, what, what I think Carrie was suggesting earlier today was that we go to a, uh, we go to the state code and, and we, uh, provide as part of the approval, uh, hearing our approval of the parking dimensionality down to the state code nine by eighteen. Is that, is that pretty much covered, Carrie?
That does, yeah. I was gonna suggest to members to vary, to go from, as opposed to doing our local code we've done in the past that we've accepted the state code in lieu of, and, um, I agree with Ryan because I mean, it just makes sense to have that drive aisle and to be having these things line up where they're at as they're, um, being proposed.
Yeah, cause the, the code calls for the two-way drive aisle to be twenty-four feet wide.
Right.
So you have to have that. And there's also precedent within the city where we have made that exception many, many times.
Was that Reed that, that asked that question?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you all right with that, Reed?
Yeah, fine with it.
Okay.
I, I, uh, and I don't know if it's on the plans or not, is coming out of that driveway onto state, is that right only or are we going to try?
We have it right now, so you can make both a left and a right out of there.
I know, we, we've been around and around with this before. The right only coming out of, I.
I didn't hear.
Go ahead.
I didn't hear the answer to the game.
Oh.
Oh, right now, the exits, uh, curb cut exit on West State Street, uh, you can make both a left and a right answer or not.
All right. Please continue, Mark.
Okay, no, I, I, I was just thinking, maybe we need to look at the right only. I, I mean, I know I don't like that, but I think because of all these projects that we have right in that area right there. I, I think it's going to be disastrous if somebody's going to try to turn, turn left coming out of that parking lot right there, because especially the light backs up.
You know, uh, Mark, I, I tend to agree with you, but
In.
the last one that we did right.
I know, I know.
We didn't do that, so it's hard for me to justify requiring, um.
But the precedence is, I guess we, that we did before with the other one was, um, we put a condition on it. If there is a problem, we have to. we put a condition on it. If there is a problem, we have to we we would revisit it.
Let's hope this front traffic. Study were.
I I just, yeah.
Would be pending, would look at all those.
From the, when you go through the drive through, are you able to loop back around the building to get back to Independence?
Yeah, you you can walk through, so it comes out and drives.
Yeah. Cause they're trying to make a left out of there. I mean, that that's.
I think you could do it during off peak hours, but during peak, I wouldn't have the patience. I would hope.
Yeah, I think most people.
There and would just exit.
And I think that's what we did at, I can't remember which one.
The other one.
Yeah, we just let it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Because.
You know, I I like Mark's approach of the 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 conditioning that uh to re-review in the future. That way, we put in the minutes documenting that that we would like to look at this again if uh if it becomes an issue. You know, we we learned uh with the Chicken Barbecue Project that we need to put these things in the minutes.
Yeah. And 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 that might give that might give a little bit of options for the DPW if they end up having to make some changes down there. You know, I mean, if they really look at that whole area down there, there might be have to be some changes that really has to be made down there.
Alright, so.
I mean, only because I live down there and I drive that through back through there all the time. And it is, it's a, it's a just a really, that needs to be like four lanes on each side coming out that way.
I liked it better than they have that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
Yeah, and they might have to just look at that again, just because.
It's so, Tom, I I have for now that the planning board would review the ingress and egress onto West State Street in the future if it becomes a problem. That would possibly be a finding at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I think he means after it's open.
But I'm sorry.
I mean, I think you mean after it's open.
Well, yeah, after it's open and then, yeah, and all of a sudden, you see a lot of traffic and people.
Oh, when I said make a finding, I mean, it'll be a condition.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It'll be a condition.
We would be fine with that condition.
Okay.
Okay.
That was Jerry that said that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jerry was fine with that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Tom, it's Jeremy.
I'm sorry.
Our planning board member, Jerry, who was there.
Okay.
Sorry.
I get called Jerry all the time.
Or just used to having one with us.
Maybe I should.
Okay, and then, Tom, I just had um two more things.
Yeah.
From our conversation with code today, if it's okay to move forward into that conversation.
Please.
Okay, um so another finding that um we believe that the planning board would want to make is to ensure that the uh lighting is night sky compliant, shielded and directed downward. That would be a condition. Okay, and then the other thing, um we weren't sure if there were five pole lights or six pole lights. We could find five, but um in the materials, it said there's six. So we were on a hunt for um six poles and found five out of them.
I believe there's five. I can ask for clarification from our engineer.
Okay, that's all we could find too.
Cause I know there's some lighting on the building itself, just over the doors and that's just small sconces.
That's what we were wondering, if it was just a typo in the material.
Might find a typo.
Okay.
Right, um so I I wanna treat this as a as a typo and that um what we would be reviewing and ultimately approving is five light poles. So that if there is a sixth, we'd want you to come back to us. Okay, so maybe maybe you can run that down before the next meeting.
Yeah, I can find that out tomorrow.
There's six foundations here.
You found the six?
Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Tom, there's six.
Geez, we, Ryan and Carrie and I were looking at the.
We need to go read.
Reed, Reed's got good eyes.
I can see in my little print.
Alright, so you can disregard.
You can't either.
I see six.
Okay.
I apologize. Okay, we should have called you earlier. Tom, that's all I had from our review uh with code enforcement today.
Okay. Any other issues from the board? Uh you know, I'll note that this has gone to the departments and uh we also have a letter from uh uh code enforcement discussing a number of the uh traditional issues that we look at, like green space and et cetera, et cetera. I'll I'll note that stormwater is directed in the city system and the project is served by uh municipal water and sewer connections. Anything else from the the board that you wanna discuss on this one?
The only comment is a typo on the Department of Public Works. It says twenty eight oh one West State on both page one and two.
Yeah.
Twenty eight ten.
And I would note also on the plan set that it says the project is located in Allegheny, New York.
Hey, this really was for twenty eight oh one though.
Oh.
So we just didn't go over it before it got approved.
Yeah, that is.
I was sitting there thinking about it when you had made mention to me of that.
Okay.
And then we had approved, it really was twenty eight oh one.
Okay.
And it was for a pepperwood properties. It really was. And it's just ironically enough, this is twenty eight ten.
Okay.
For Starbucks. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm so used to being um yeah, sorry. I was just so used to not saying that.
You can have coffee with the baby's bar.
Okay, I'm gonna eat it. Thanks.
So I'll I'll note that the agenda says twenty eight ten, so uh in the future.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it it is.
It is ten?
Pepperwood, the
It's the other project.
It's the other project and that is correct. There was no typo on that. It really was messed up.
Twenty eight ten.
Correct.
I was so used to being confidential for someone. I'm so sorry.
I wasn't confused. Okay.
I gotta mess up.
In terms of, I I forgot to ask this afternoon, Carrie, but um this property is on a on a state highway and also it's a, it's very close to the municipal boundary. Is there a, is there a need for uh, you know, the statutory for the county planning board?
No, Ryan and I chose not to, to be honest. Um we thought that we could handle it in-house as opposed to holding anything up and um just keeping with the county's agreement at our discretion.
Okay, Kathy, let the uh let the minutes reflect that. Thank you. Okay, uh is there a reason for us to do anything other than an uncoordinated secret review? Okay, I I would entertain a motion then to declare the planning board lead agent for an uncoordinated secret review.
I'll move.
Second.
Craig and Mark.
Made the seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, own favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's carried. Uh we have in front of us the uh short form. Carrie, do you wanna walk us through that?
Sure. Uh part one, you'll find the project and sponsor information that we're familiar with, being Alacott Development at the twenty eight ten West State Street. Uh question one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance administrative rule of regulation? That's marked no. Two, does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency? That's marked yes. That being the planning board and code enforcement. Three, uh total acreage of the site, the proposed action is the one point nine five acres. Uh the acreage to be physically disturbed obviously is under one acre, uh so no slip is required. That's point nine acres. The total acreage of the project site and any contiguous properties owned, but Alacott is uh approximately four point two eight acres. And number four, check all land uses that occur on or adjoining. Oh, what are you on?
What are you on?
You're on the wrong seeker.
I'm on twenty eight ten.
Was it revised once a minute?
Your numbers don't jack.
Yeah, that's not, I have a revised, you guys don't.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize that. The first page should have been replaced.
Okay, one point also, that that description doesn't have to be updated for the pad too.
Yeah, further revised. Uh and it was just a zoning permit, but I can add that as well.
So can you repeat those numbers you have?
Yep, it's one point nine five acres. And then for three A, three B is point nine acres. And three C is four point two eight acres. And then is okay to go on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um uh four is check all land uses that occur on or are joining or near the proposed action. Uh commercials checked.
Do you wanna check residential?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um Tom, I don't know if you heard that residential suburban to be checked.
Yeah. For me.
Change is noted. Five is the proposed action, A, a permitted use under the zoning regulations. That's marked yes. B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. That's marked yes. Six is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape. That's marked yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? That's marked no. A, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? That's marked no. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? That's marked no.
Yes, right.
Yes, um Tom, we're gonna um make the change, mark that as yes, is the linear area transit system um goes by that location.
Google it and show it.
Oh, and we're on Google now.
So when I filled it out, Google did show it.
Oh.
Post us or anything.
Yeah, no, Kathy works on that with DOT. Yeah, it's okay. We'll we'll work with DOT in Google. Um are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? That's marked yes.
Before we leave this question, can we talk for a minute about uh traffic volume levels and whether or not a traffic study would be appropriate? Any comment, Jeremy?
Uh from our experience for a project of this size, it would not cause too much traffic issue, especially with the traffic numbers already on West State Streets. Typically for a Starbucks or Tim Hortons along this area, it doesn't bring in new traffic for the per se, it more or less takes the existing traffic and then they re, they aren't going on their way to work or from work or in the middle of a route to stop and get coffee or go to a shop like this.
Do you have any data from past experience about the the actual number of projected uh increased vehicular trips on on a a street like State Street?
Not readily available to us just from experience we have from developing stuff in the Western New York area and our conversations with Starbucks themselves. They, we none of us saw it uh the reason to go have a traffic study done.
Well, since this was brought up in the earlier project, it it's something that I think that probably we ought to make certain that we pay some attention to. Um I I would suggest that perhaps you could come to the next meeting with some sort of at least estimation of vehicular or increased vehicular traffic.
We had some data when they proposed the Tim Hortons out on East State. Could we pull that?
Yeah, that was uh.
Yeah.
That woman.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So both of those.
Yeah, they just, they're, they rattled off data that they had from DOT.
That it's similar to what you're anecdotally saying.
Because what they did, and I I know what you're talking about, because they went to DOT and said, hey, do you want uh traffic analysis or study done? And DOT said no. Um and the reason being is they said it would be a local issue. And then code said, no, we don't want one done either because the applicant had provided the information with the current.
You can reach out to DOT.
I think that would be best because then it had the current traffic um data that was going through. And it it was absolutely very similar, the conversation that Tim Hortons just said, is that we're pulling people in. It's already existing. So maybe that would help to have that same conversation.
We do that for the next meeting.
Okay. Good, okay.
Thank you. Uh please continue, Carrie.
Okay, uh we, I think we're on question nine. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? That's marked yes. Uh ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? That's marked yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? That's marked yes. Twelve A, does the project site containers, it substantially contiguous to a building archaeological site or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of Office of Parks, Rock and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? That's marked no. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites in the New York State Historic Preservation Archaeological Site Inventory? That's marked yes.
I I would note that um the site has been previously disturbed, previously built on. So.
Noted.
Yeah.
Okay, thirteen A, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a fed state or local agency? That's marked yes. Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? That's marked no.
Yeah, yes, question there. What what water body are we referring to?
Yeah, that's A.
Two Mile Creek.
The state automatically filled that in as a yes. Uh it was the creek behind.
Behind Holiday Park.
Behind Holiday Park Center because the old tax boundary for twenty eight ten West State Street went all the way through to the rear and abutted the uh creek or river in the rear there.
But now it doesn't because of the Holiday Park.
Yeah.
And so is the EAF mapper, Tom?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, please continue.
Okay, uh fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site. That's marked suburban.
Probably mark urban also.
Reed, is that what you're saying? Okay, Tom noted. Fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? That's marked no. Is the project site located in the one hundred year floodplain? That's marked no. Will the proposed action create, um was there a question?
Yeah, I I'm curious that on the EAF mapper that there was no.
On fifteen, Tom?
Yeah, uh there were, there were no uh.
These dangers.
Dangerous.
Weird ones that we always.
Yeah.
Especially since it picked up on the adjacency to Six Mile Creek.
Okay. He attached the EAF mapper.
Yeah.
Obviously, that there's, you know, there's not gonna be any real issues there because they relate to the creek, which is really not adjacent to the site or will be impacted by it. I'm just curious that that it didn't pick that goes up with the EAF mapper given that it picked it up, picked up the adjacency to the creek.
There's no on the next page.
Right. Yeah, I don't know what to do. The D C mapper populated the answers for those.
Because it's in the front area.
Oh, yeah, that's true too.
It's in the front, not towards the back, because the building's going all the way across the Holiday Park, so it's probably because of the buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, when I did it, I just selected just the project boundaries on the mapper and automatically filled in the.
Sure. Yeah.
So it's wetlands, so.
Okay. Tom, are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, I, I was just wondering why it wasn't like that, but you know, a, a, as I said, even if there were some, you know, snail darters or something like that, it, it wouldn't be, uh, germane to our particular project anyway, so it would be moved.
Agreed. Okay. Um, I believe we are on seventeen, okay, thank you. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources, that's marked yes? Will stormwater discharges flow to adjacent properties, that's marked yes? Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems run up in storm drains, that's marked yes? And the explanation is stormwater will run into the existing conveyance system into Holiday Park Center.
Now, now, the, the first part of that uh, question A on there, um, will it flow to adjacent properties? Jeremy, could you explain that a little bit further?
Yeah, so, uh, Holiday Park Center, uh, is a separate tax parcel. So historically it was three separate tax parcels. There is twenty seven eighteen West State Street, which was the eastern end of the property. Uh, twenty eight ten West State Street and it was, uh, no, it was, uh, we, uh, it was a hundred and something Independence Drive, which was just the entrance of that, so, uh, even with it, uh, we've combined the other three, the rest of Holiday Park Center into a separate tax parcel. So, uh, how Starbucks pro, uh, project is a separate tax parcel from Holiday Park Center. So that's the reasoning behind saying yes to that.
So what you're saying is that this site, the stormwater from this site will flow onto the Holiday Park Center?
Uh, it flows into, it's through the pipe system underground, it'll, uh, connect into the existing, uh, conveyance system in Holiday Park Center. So the catch basins on our property underground.
Uh, on the surface, there won't be any surface water that flows onto adjoining parcels.
Correct, it, it just, it would, uh, the way it's saying, oh, we go into the catch basins on site, but.
Yeah, that's a I, I would almost want to answer that one, no, you know, that's that question.
Yeah, because usually we, we think about that going onto somebody else's property.
Right on the surface.
Your building next to a residential, you know, that water runs, but it's not, you know.
Yeah, how many catch basins are contained on the site?
Believe.
The new site, yeah.
There are six. And one is the northern one is right on the property line.
Okay.
Before it's adjacent to it.
Right, right before it goes into the other part of the park.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so it'll be minimal, I'd say I would.
Yeah, you won't have a lot going in.
No.
Running over.
No.
Okay, thanks.
And even if there did, uh, there are catch basins in the Holiday Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I, one of the reasons I ask is because that area was notorious previously, uh, prior to, uh, oh, is actually in the adjacent property, um, behind where like Domino's is. There used to be flooding back there like crazy, it used to pile up about eighteen inches in the old parking lot. And when they filled all of that area in with grass, um, that whole strip between the driveway into the, uh, Holiday Park West and the Perkins that was all, or up to Bolin, I should say, or up to Perkins. That was all, just it would pond back there like crazy, used to ride our bikes through when I was a kid, when it big rains. But it's mitigated now, I, I get with the new catch basins and piping that's in there.
Yeah.
At a project with, where there was going to be an Arby's located where the Domino's is currently, at one point, and that was an issue for them to come back to us, or if you recall, Tom. Um, they were supposed to address that stormwater issue, just confirming it, and then they never came back.
Right.
That was the contingent on the approval, and then they never did. So that was the only reason I was asking, but I think you've got it taken care of with what you.
And, and they never, uh, built the, uh.
Was that the Wing City Grill?
Yeah, it was Wing City Grill.
No, this was.
Arby's owner.
Uh, that was the former Arby's owner, yes. But they were talking about putting an Arby's in the space where the, uh, Domino's and nail salon or whatever are there now.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with flow from this
Yeah.
north, you know, my, my consideration is mostly will there be any flow to the east and west sides? Uh, east and west adjoining properties. I guess that's a question for you, Jeremy?
No, it, it wouldn't be with the grading, we have everything sloped, so it goes to our catch basins on site.
And that includes the drive aisles?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I would suggest we might want to change the answer of seventeen A to, uh, no.
Noted.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, please continue.
As I am eighteen.
Yeah.
Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impalement of water or other liquids, that's marked no? Nineteen, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property, but in the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility, that's marked no? Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property, but the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste, that's marked no?
Everybody okay with part one?
Yes, you.
Okay, we'll move on to part two. Uh, you know, the Carrie's filled in the answers to these, uh, eleven questions, she's marked no or small impact may occur. Give you a moment to look through that, see whether or not, uh, you have any issues with any of those. Please speak up if you do. Everyone okay with those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to part three. Uh, given what we've discussed here, I would entertain a motion, or I would, yeah, I'd entertain a motion to make a finding that the project will pose no significant adverse environmental impact. And accordingly to authorize the issuance of a negative declaration on the project.
I'll move.
Reed and J R.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's Carrie. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to make a finding that we have a completed application.
So move.
Second.
Mark and Mary.
Mark made and seconded. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's Carrie. Now it's time to set a public hearing for this. Jeremy, what we usually do is, uh, you know, we meet every two weeks, so the next yeah, uh, it's actually the second and fourth Mondays of the month, so what would that be for October?
Yeah, Tom, that's one thing, um, you know, we were in touch earlier when we spoke. The building will be closed on that second Monday, um, in observance of Columbus Day. So we would need to hold a special meeting, um, I do believe that on the seventeenth, um, or I don't know if members pushed it to the twenty fourth, I don't know what the schedule's like for construction timeline, um.
Uh, for construction timeline, uh, we are looking to start later this year, if possible, and then we say approximately it'll take ten months or so.
Okay.
To construct it, once we get started, any approvals.
So does, does, uh, could you wait till the twenty fourth of October for an approval from us, or would, would that put a crimp in your construction schedule and we should do this on the seventeenth?
We would prefer to do it earlier than that, if possible, we prefer the seventeenth, just so hopefully this year looks like it's getting colder a little faster. So.
Okay. I'm okay with that, if the board is all right with that? Special meeting.
I'm okay.
It's not a Bills game, I set up a meeting.
Okay.
So October what?
Seventeenth.
Okay. So what that would mean is that we would set a public hearing on the seventeenth at six thirty. Does that work for you, Jeremy?
Yes, it does.
Okay, uh, before I ask for a motion to set that, Carrie, could you explain to him the, uh, public notification?
Oh, sure, so, um, our city assessor's office will prepare a radius. Um, we typically will have that list done, Kathy will be emailing it to you guys, um, by Wednesday morning. And, and it will come with a memorandum with direction, and then it will come with the public hearing notice that you provide to those property owners within that radius. Um, and all you do is put your name, address, brief description of the, uh, project proposal. And then there's a certification form saying that you did indeed, uh, mail those via regular USPS, um, prior to Friday. But in this case, you will have one extra week, so it would be the following Friday. That's it.
They need, they need that ten days of notice for this to be, uh, if it work. Okay, so, uh, that, that all worked for you, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, I'll ask for a motion to set the public hearing on the seventeenth to six thirty.
Motion.
Mary and J R.
Made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's Carrie. Okay, we will see you, uh, on the seventeenth for this project, I'm assuming you're gonna be presenting on the twenty one oh one West State as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll see you right now, then. Time to move on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let you, your plan set there? You take a, you take minutes for a break?
I'll see you guys.
Or do we want to wait for Mark to come back?
Um, whenever you would like, he said he just needed to make a brief call.
Okay.
While he's doing that, could make a change on the zoning permit application?
Yeah.
Um, right now it's saying it's other commercial retail. Forty-two units.
Oh, you know why I pointed it that way? Um. Yes, because that's what's currently there, and they don't intend to split the parcel. Um, so that's why we had him fill it out is what's happening there, um. Why, but I mean, we can add that in addition to, do you think? Yeah, Tom, do you want, um, if you turn to the zoning permit application, um, you would add, um, a multifamily dwelling and then the number of units in addition to the other with the commercial retail?
I guess I'm not following you, what, what, which project are we discussing right now?
The new one, twenty one oh one, the housing.
Okay, now what are you suggesting?
So Reed suggested, if you go to page one of the zoning permit application, um, question number one, it says, please check one. It says, other business, please describe commercial retail.
Sorry.
So he's suggesting adding a multifamily dwelling and the number of units.
Nowhere, where are?
Number one.
Page one of the zoning permit application.
It says other, okay, other, right. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not certain why that, that was, uh, commercial retail in the first place.
We, um, just had him put what was existing. Alright, so I made that change.
Okay. Alrighty.
And how many units?
Uh, first phase is twenty-four. And the second phase is additional twenty.
Okay, so you're gonna do the two twelves first?
Yeah. The two twelve on the east side.
Yeah.
And I, I would note that the entire parcel all the way out to State Street is owned by Ellicott Development?
Yes.
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 So, so there's, again, there's no there's no need to get
The easements.
Yeah, yeah, or, or an agreement to guarantee access, but do you have something like that in place, or?
We do not, because it is one tax parcel.
Okay.
In this instance.
If, if they're ever sold off, that, that would be something that would have to be put in place.
Yeah, if, if we ever, ever get subdivided or portion of the property gets sold, that would be, get put in place, uh, at that time.
Is that, is Ellicott prepared to, uh, allow any overflow parking in the front parking lots?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the ingress and egress gonna be?
Uh, it'll be the, we'll be using the exist, uh, existing ingress egress along West State Street, uh, where the traffic light is.
Okay, you, you just come back out.
Yeah.
Like how far, how far into that property, where you'd be going?
Uh, for.
Using it all?
We own it all from everything.
I mean, that, once the buildings are up, it will basically be all the way back to the next.
Yeah, it'll all, pretty much go all the way back to West Henley, it'll probably be back where my finger is, it's probably the edge of the building.
So, yeah, um, we've waited, so if you just want to start at the very beginning, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to start at the beginning and then we'll follow.
Before we move, before we move into that, I would note for, um, for the minutes and to piggyback on Mark's comment that, um, there specifically is more, um, planned, um, or, or, uh, uh, there's no planned egress ingress onto the paper Henley Street on the south side of the project. And, uh, we are not reviewing that because it's not part of the site plan application. So if that ever were contemplated in the future, that would have to come back to us again.
So there is no, not on the Henry that call?
No.
It's just a paper street back there right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it drove by here before the meeting. Yeah. Yeah, it's. We didn't, we turned it early west of the street.
Right. It's an active city standard.
Okay, Jeremy, you want to open the presentation here for us?
So, uh, so right now we're in, uh, discuss twenty one oh one West State Street. As, as we have already mentioned, we are looking to construct approximately forty-two, uh, residential apartment units over the course of two phases. Uh, twenty one oh one West State Street is located between South nineteenth and twenty, South twenty-first streets. Uh, in front, we do have two commer, existing, uh, commercial retail building. One, it, uh, Arians, I believe, is on the east side of the property, and then on the other side, it's a multi-tenant building anchored by Little Caesars. Uh, in the rear of the property right now, it's, uh, vacant, land is all, uh, heavily treated. Uh, and then adjacent to our property is the, uh, bike trail, I believe.
Yes.
Next door, uh, so we are looking to construct the two twelve unit apartments along the east side of the property in phase one. Uh, we are looking to construct, uh, this project, uh, that phase one on a similar timeline as the Starbucks, so depending on weather condition and approvals, hopefully later this year, uh, we anticipate construction to take twelve months. Uh, the twelve unit buildings will be, feature and mixture of one, two, and three bedroom units. Uh, the, on the ends of the twelve units buildings. The, on the ends of the twelve units buildings, there will be four townhomes that are bi-level. Uh, there will be two on each side of the building. They will have their own private garage and parking in front of that garage for each unit. Uh, the both, all four apartments, buildings will share a parking lot as well. The apartment units will have patios as well.
Are any of the, are there any of the apartment units gonna be single-story units?
Yeah, so the apartment units in the main, the center building, so like the eight-unit building, uh, those will all be single-level apartments. You know, so then they'll have a center staircase that'll walk up and then each of them will have their own separate entrance into their apartments. There'll be four apartments on the first floor and four apartments on the second floor of the eight-unit building. It'll be the same thing for the twelve-unit buildings. They'll have the exact same layouts. The only difference between the eight-unit building and the twelve-unit building is the twelve-unit building has the townhomes and vans. Uh, all building, all the buildings will have a, a weather tech or cedar certainty main street siding. Uh, we will have a two-tone scheme. It'll be heatherstone against Savannah Wicker currently. You may change that in a couple, a couple of weeks depending on how we see, where that's the color scheme we have for our ten unit apartment building we have approved on the Harbor Freight site in Alany. Well, that is all I have for you guys. So if you guys have any questions, go through them.
Carrie, why don't you go through the list of things we talked about today?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I looked at there. Well, what's the regulations on parking for an apartment building? I mean.
It's in, um, it's in the memorandum that was provided. They needed thirty-seven parking spaces plus two handicap accessible. Um, and they had fifty-one spaces available and two handicap accessible.
I, I would note that if you were looking at the plan set, the plan set in the notes is.
Yeah, the plan set, cuz I.
Says there are eighty-three required.
And there's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at it.
We weren't sure why it said that, but Ryan confirmed again today. They thirty-seven are required plus two handicap and they provided fifty-one plus two handicap.
And that will be good, that will even be good once all the buildings are.
Yes, that is for every phase. Yeah, both phases. Yes, absolutely. Um, now, the one question, well, I guess one finding that Tom and Ryan and I discussed that possibly the board would wanna take into consideration is that lighting be night sky compliant, shielded, and directed downward. And then the one question that Tom had raised is why there's no pole lighting? And if this is like the new way of developing with, without a monstrosity of poles? If that was just the design involved?
So when I was talking to our engineer, he felt this saw from, from what their lighting consultant said, from having the wall sconces on there, get adequate lighting.
Okay.
If we need, we feel in the future that we need additional lighting just from the rear of the commercial buildings and that the wall lighting that would be on the building, we feel that we need additional in the future, we can come back to the board and have that.
Are there normally pole lightings in residential? They're not, they're not.
Depends on the size.
Yeah, cuz there isn't any, yeah, so.
It really depends on the size of the parking lot, but in this case, with it being two rows in a building on each side, uh, typically the wall, the wall sconces on the building provide enough lighting to cover the parking spaces and sidewalks.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my concern was basically just with the, uh, first security. You know, people feeling, feeling safe in the parking lot, it was well lit. And secondly, uh, uh, safety with respect to, uh, vehicles being able to see pedestrians. So. That's where I'm coming from in, in raising that point.
Okay, Tom, are you okay with that then?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
Okay, um, one other thing was noting, you know, to make a finding that we would again vary from our local nine-by-twenty parking dimension requirement and take on and accept the state code parking spaces of nine by eighteen as proposed on the site plan. And then, um.
How wide is that drive aisle though?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet.
Okay.
Uh, Craig, are you okay with that?
Yeah, with that dimension, it just didn't look that way. I guess it does. I guess it does now.
Okay.
Just, just to make certain that we're using the right language here, um, the. In both cases, the earlier project and in this project, uh, we make, we need to make a finding on the, using the nine by eighteen uh, state code that, that that's, that that's adequate for our purposes. And that'll, that'll be something that we will have to memorialize with a motion in both cases. And that, that'll be true, you know, we can do that today or on the seventeenth. But with respect to the, uh, the downward shielded, uh, wall pack lighting, that's a condition as opposed to a finding.
Okay.
Right. Just wanna get the terminology straight.
Okay. Um, then the other thing was, he explained the floor plan layout, that was a question. And any consideration to accommodate additional handicap parking spaces?
I mean, if you only need thirty-seven and you have fifty-one, it would seem like you'd wanna at least.
We can add more. That's, that's a simpler request, you can add additional.
ADA spot in, in, in each building, you know? That, that would, uh, at least accommodate, uh.
Yeah, we can add one in front of each building.
But you know, I, I would, I would point out that if you've got units in all four buildings that are going to be, uh, single-story apartments and first-floor units, that those would be attractive to, uh, to the disabled. And having handicap spots close by those buildings would be, uh, would, would, would be advisable. Right now, the, the only two spots that you have are off to the side of the eight-unit building. And so, I mean, they're not even that close to the, to the front entrances of the, of the eight-unit building. So, yeah, if we could add.
And the regulations, the regulations are only two required?
Yes.
So I would think for a business standpoint, if they wanted to add them later, they could. I hate to have us condition it if it's above what the regs are. That's my opinion.
Are these buildings, is there gonna be like a main entrance on the front? I see like the, the building in the top, it's like there's, there's a main entrance that you go. Would it be an elevator?
No, so it says it is a, uh, two stories. Yeah, it's so the first floor, uh, units in the center corridor for the eight building, all of those, the bottom floor units will be ADA accessible.
Okay.
So on site, we will have sixteen ADA accessible apartments.
Well, see, you know, in just that, that point exact, and you don't have enough handicap. If you're gonna have sixteen ADA and you only have two parking spots.
Oh, yeah, you're not gonna, I mean, you're gonna do one per building, right?
For, for handicap spaces?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add one or two, we can look into it.
Right, so you wouldn't mind up with a total of sixteen?
No, you would just.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that is, all the, all of our apartments are designed to meet ADA requirements.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we went from two to six, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I.
No, four.
And get rid of the, get rid of the, the two that you have right now?
Yeah, but we can move the two we have existing there, we can move them down, we can move it in front of, so we can have two in front of each of the first phase.
Two in front of each of the first phase?
Yeah.
I, I was suggesting that, I mean, if you wanted to put two in front of, 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 uh, oh, you say one in front of each building or just two in front of the first phase?
So we are, right now, we can do two in front of each phase and then we can see how the, how the market is when we're going to do the second phase. So we'd look at probably be, depending on these, these one or three years. So if we see there's really a high demand for extra handicap spaces at that time when we construct Phase Two, we can put two in.
I, I guess I, I just wanna make certain I'm understanding you correctly. You're saying for the first phase, so in other words, one spot in front of each of the two buildings in the first phase.
Yes, we'd be at one spot, one handicap spot in front of each building.
Right.
Sorry, I was saying, I agree with Mary. I don't want to, I, I would be hesitant to make this a condition. I mean, it's, would, seems to be a business decision to me, not necessarily necessarily on purpose. Whenever we mess with parking, it gets us in trouble.
Well, you know.
Requested, they would put them in. They're very good about stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess my. I, only and I'm, and of course Craig's here.
Yeah.
He deals with this all the time. I deal with it with my wife all the time. The handicap spots just aren't in the right spot. They just never, you know, so I'm just thinking, think ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking if you have the, the main entrance in the building, if you have one here and one here and it's open in the middle, you know, you could even get a wheelchair, uh, like a, what do you call, like a.
A loading.
A loading one, you know, either way that way.
The two handicap spots, John, we can reload.
You know, like right at the front.
Yeah.
Because that's where they're gonna, you know, you're probably gonna have that ramp coming in anyways where you can get ready, you know, and I'm just saying it's.
We'll look into the actual location for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. That, that's, you know, that's all. Again, I know they're only saying two, but I just think that's.
Yeah, cuz I mean, ideally, where, where you're gonna want your handicap space is near the apartment, closest to the apartment that the handicap person's gonna be in. So really, it could be fluid as long as you're willing to move it.
A few years and it's sad to say, but sometimes they put it at the end of, I mean, I've been at these hotels where they just, like they have them in the back, out in the back corner. I'm like, why would you have a handicap spot on it? It's just, you know, cuz they needed to have one, so they put one. But you know, it's.
Spaces assigned by apartment or just a free brawl?
Or typically we just do it for open, unless it becomes an issue, that's the only time we really.
So in the future, sir, you need to assign a handicap space provisionally to somebody living in an apartment, you can do that.
Yeah, we can do that. That's, that's something very easy we can do.
Lucky somebody's living in one of the other ones, yeah.
And, and to respond to Mary's comment about, uh, not wanting we, we're to condition spots for all four apartments, I, I, I would disagree with that. I would think that we would want to have, uh, at minimum, one spot for each, each of the four buildings. And that's how we would approve it with that condition. And then if, in the two years between the first two phases, if the applicant finds that there really isn't a need for those two handicap spots in the second phase, they can just come back to us and ask us to vary that. You know, to, to remove that condition.
Well, you, you could even say you do keep them because then you may have someone visiting a tenant. Um, especially since they've got an excess of spa, of spaces, what they need.
I, I'm, I'm just saying that it's, it's, uh, it's easier to condition this upfront than remove the condition.
Right.
Yeah, what if we let them assess this and come back with their revised site plan and see what they're proposing?
Right.
By the next meeting, would that be fair?
Let me just ask a question, that, that's fine. Let me just, question of Jeremy, uh, in terms of the construction, when you build these things, you're building two buildings and a parking lot to serve those buildings. And then, um, i- is the parking lot that you're gonna be building to serve the first phase, is that gonna be the parking lot that, that you're gonna end up with?
We would build the parking lot for the full project besides the driveway into the garages for the townhomes. All, all the other parking spaces, we would build right away.
Yeah, so in other words, uh, um, the way that the, the plan is right now, your, um, two ADA spots would be across the parking lot from the two buildings.
Yeah, as of right now, yeah, we'll look into that and get it back to you guys for the next meeting.
And, and also I would just, considering how construction goes, because you'd be bringing in heavy equipment to lay foundations and so forth, dig foundations and, and lay black and so forth, uh, on that parking lot. And, you know, it would be coming right up against the, the parking lot, so. I, I just found it interesting to see how you plan to have.
You just wanna put down the top coat, right?
With that construction.
You would lay the base and not the tap until construction is done.
Yeah, we would, we would have to, we'd go back and, we would add, we wouldn't do sidewalks in that on the west side of the property. We would just have the parking spaces on that side and then once, oh, we go in and the foundations are in, the buildings are ready, we would have, go back and put the sidewalks in and make any repairs we need to in the parking lot.
Okay, Carrie, what other things do you have on your list?
Uh, the only other thing is with the underground detention field, um, I mean, we realize there's the eight-inch perforated pipe. And then, um, French drains are not behind the eight units. So we just were wondering if it had to do with the elevation and if that's why it didn't continue in that fashion.
I will have to check with the engineer on that one.
Okay.
There, there's no yard drains in, in the, you know, the French drain going into the collection system. And, you know, I, I point out to the board, uh, if you didn't pick up on this, cuz it's not really explained too well in the notes, but, uh, there are catch basins in the parking lot. And there are, uh, there's a French drain system all around three out of the four buildings in which there are yard drains.
I, actually, looking at the plan, uh, so behind the eight-unit building, there is a sixty-foot wide easement that we're not allowed to touch or sharp things on.
Okay.
That is.
Why?
Most likely to.
Sanica gas pipeline, isn't it?
It is. It's a gas line.
Yeah, we're figuring utilities.
Yes, uh, gas and I believe electric also. Yeah.
Yes.
So, so just to, uh, ju- just, just to go on with, with what I was saying to the board, uh, the, uh, the catch basin system raises the parking lot and these yard drains will drain the yards and they, all of them empty into the catch basin system and the French drain system, empty into a large underground, uh, storage basin. It's underneath the parking lot. And, uh, most of that's supposed to perk down into the ground, but any overflow goes between the two buildings, eh, eh, through an underground eight-inch pipe, uh, in, into the city storm system. So that's where that goes. And, you know, if you, if you look at the one sheet in the, in the plan set that, uh, that contains the elevations, you look at the southeastern corner, southwestern corner, pardon me, of the lot, you notice that the adjoining properties are five feet higher in elevation than the southwestern corner. So in other words, uh, there, there is substantial, uh, possibility or opportunity, I should say, that, uh, storm water will drain from the adjoining properties onto the site. So ergo, the need for this, uh, French drain system. So I just wanted the board to understand, uh, what the storm water management uh, system is for this, this site. And, uh, you know, Ryan's looked through it and we, we talked with him extensively this afternoon and it's acceptable to him, so, uh, there you have it. Unless you have questions, board. Any questions on that storm water?
I have another question.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other items in your list, Carrie?
Uh, Mark has one more question.
Uh, garbage. Here go garbage. Where the where is the dumpster dumpster gonna be?
So the dumpster will be. Is located right here. This dumpster will be. Exclusive for the apartment units.
Okay.
We just didn't like, we originally thought about putting it here, we just didn't like. The look of that, so we would just put it up here closer to the commercial buildings that way uh. And they kind of pick up the garbage.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm I'm looking at it backwards then. Okay, so it's gonna be.
Oh, do you?
It's gonna be right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We felt there was more convenience people would think when they're driving out, they can just correct bring it with them and throw it in the trash. Bring it along. It's closer walk for most of them. We just. Putting it back there, we just gonna feel that's the best location.
We want people driving towards dumpster.
Yeah, we we decided we normally would do it in that case scenario. We didn't want people blocking in. When they drive in. At you don't stare at it. This one's a little blocked with the building. Yeah.
Are you gonna fence the back or anything?
Yeah, you you would have the enclosed and then look through landscaping on one side.
And what about the back towards the paper road? Is there gonna be anything?
Yeah, I believe there's landscaping.
Line of trees back there?
Landscaping sheet shows that there's gonna be a line of trees planted back there.
Sure, so the model property, yeah, there is like. Uh, there's.
Oh, trees.
Yeah, there's lots of rural trees, rural lines, uh, property line.
I should mention that.
So you're building the two. Well, to me, it looks like on the north side, but the top part.
Yeah, on the top part of the chain is where. Where they'll be.
Good.
And then the apartment just look out on it like that.
Yeah, the back patio for those ones will look right out on stuff like that.
Very nice.
Yeah, very nice.
Okay.
Apartments online.
The. Any other comments or questions?
Do you, yeah, did you have, what's the setback on the rear?
Well. Believe.
It was somewhere between fifteen and twenty and they don't show it on here. But it was.
Well, I asked because like when I was doing something at my shop, they told me that. Like that would have two, like I have in my shop, it's a corner. I have two fronts, so I have to honor the front setback. On both sides. And does that?
Is yours general commercial? This is and it has residential.
Yeah, way Ryan explained it though cuz it borders the two streets. I had to honor, I had to honor it's two fronts, if you will.
Yeah.
So like at the front of my shop, where I wanted to build an office off the front, I had to honor a front off Delaware and off from Front Street, even though my address is Front Street. So that's why I asked the paper street of West Henley in the rear, will that still meet the front setback?
Well, there's the easement too that you're away from, so. There's no way.
I'm saying parallel to.
No, you saw.
Uh.
I'm saying parallel to West Henley, so from that street, the paper street back to the corner of the building, what is the front? The setback.
Yeah, cuz I thought code signed off, but I mean, I can double check that.
Yeah, I, when I talked to Ryan, when I said he didn't mention it to me.
Yeah.
I think we.
I'm only asking just cuz I know I ran into it on my own.
Yeah, I don't know if it's just the case because it's a.
I follow.
Extension street. But he never mentioned that to me when I spoke to him.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't remember what the front. Setback requirement is.
I I know on for the front street, it's twenty one feet like where I am at.
I know, I think it was if I remember correctly.
And I think this is a little different scenario because of it being general commercial. And putting residential on it.
Well, it's it's worth investigating.
I will.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Jim.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, cuz it. I'll I'll double check and get the measurement.
And you don't think there's ever a possibility that you would go out into that paper street?
No.
Would you go, okay?
No.
Never, okay.
No.
Well, only only another thing, too safety wise, that 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 would just be a.
Yeah.
People.
Both both me and our CEO drove back there. We both looked at it, we said. We were to like, is on survey, AC.
Yeah, okay.
There's a street that we'd look, see an.
Better with.
And the person you.
Yeah, that would just be a cut through, that would be, yeah, just. That's all you have is.
That's what it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the trees will be nice.
Yeah, no, tree.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, is there any reason, Carrie, for us to do anything other than uncoordinated secret review?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. To designate the planning board as lead agent for uncoordinated secret review.
Move.
JR and Reed.
He made seconded any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's Carrie. Uh, Carrie, you wanna walk us through the uh short form?
Yes, we have the project and sponsor information with the description as described. We have the um applicant sponsor information being recognized as Alacat Development Land Twenty Twenty LLC with the um. The project address of twenty one oh one West State Street. One, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local ordinance administrative rule regulation that's marked no? Does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency that's marked yes, save only on planning board? Three A total acreage of the site, the proposed action is three point three two acres. The total acreage should be physically disturbed is point nine acres. The total acre or acreage owned by or controlled by the applicant is three point three. Two acres. All land uses that occur on or joining or near the proposed action is marked commercial and residential.
Mark forest.
Tom, did you hear that?
No.
Marking forest.
I'm okay with that. I would also mark urban.
Noted. Five is a proposed action of permitted use under the zoning regulations that's marked yes. Consistent with the adapted comprehensive or comprehensive plan that's marked yes. Is the proposed action consistent with a predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape that's marked yes? Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area that's marked no? Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels that's marked no? Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? I'd like to uh note the only area transit system runs on West State Street, so if we could change that to yes. Uh, C are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action that's marked yes? Does a proposed action?
Before we leave uh. Uh, question eight. Uh, I wanna return to this. Uh, issue of potential increases to vehicular traffic. You know, I I just want to. Have discussed this. I'm not, I'm not. Doubting that there will be a substantial increase, but I mean, we are talking. Ultimately, uh. What?
Forty four.
Were you?
Forty.
Forty two units, sorry.
Yeah, so um. I- is it our? Estimation that that there there will be no significant. Uh, increase in vehicular traffic because of that?
We do not see it being. Raising any significant traffic, especially with it being at a intersection with the lights right there. Uh, traffic going in and out of the property. Should be generally very easy. And then we see is mostly being. Uh, I think we see just from based on conversations with bond ventures, a lot of this will be. Uh, seen like graduate level college students or young professionals in the area looking to live here. So for most parts, it's. You don't see it being any substantial traffic, especially with residential apartments based on our experience, they typically don't. Add traffic level now. Or cause any traffic. It's more of the bigger retail or large subdivisions that cause. Made more major traffic issues.
Are these one or two bedroom apartments?
Yeah, for the most part, it's. Uh, there'll be four one bedrooms. Uh, six two bedrooms and two three bedrooms in the twelves and then the. Uh, eight unit will be for one bedroom and for. Uh, two bedrooms. You, our experience with the three bedrooms, typically. You only get two cars for those.
So I'll I'll ask the board if if you're. If you're. Okay with uh. This answer that there's not expected to be any. Uh, significant increase in traffic volumes.
Well, I I would say that it's a significant increase over the current zero. But I don't see it as being a problem. So I think you could mark it as a yes, and then when we do our review, it's a. Um. Low to moderate impact.
Perfect. It says substantial. It increase in traffic.
Yeah, so again, over zero is substantial, but. It's not a signi- it's not terribly significant.
So you you would like to see that marked yes. Eight A.
When you're, cuz only because you're comparing it to no trips at all.
So the answer to my question is yes?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody all right with that and the board?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with that as long as it's gonna be low impact on the.
But to, yeah.
That that approach works for you, Craig, so.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I see it as being a no to small impact.
Okay.
Okay.
Kathy?
Okay.
Please show.
I'll note that change.
Please make make certain that the. That the minutes reflect that we did discuss the traffic volume issue on this.
For sure.
Okay. Carrie?
Okay, I know A A has been changed to yes, eight B has been changed to yes, eight C remains the same as yes. And then um moving on to nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements that's marked yes? Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply that's marked yes? Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities that's marked yes? Twelve A, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building archaeological site or district? Which is listed on the national or state register of historic places. Or that has been determined by the commissioner of the office of parks, wreck and historic preservation. To be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places that's marked no? Twelve B is a project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated. As sensitive for archaeological sites of the New York State. Um, historic preservation office archaeological site inventory that's marked yes.
And you know. You do note the re- return from the mapper? And it mentions uh. Oh, wait, this is, that's for the endangered species, but there's. There's uh.
Never selected yes for that one.
Yeah.
What I could do my research on, I couldn't find any.
Yep, the um, the reason being is that entire city is considered archaeologically sensitive.
Okay.
So that's the reason why I related to it.
Right.
Um, thirteen A, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining on. Uh, adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state or local agency that's marked no? Was the proposed action?
Just as a question for you, Jeremy. I mean, there is a a substantial swath cutting across the site. Which uh you've identified in the plan set as being marshland. Have you uh? Have you contacted any federal agency to see if see whether or not? That marshland is is identified as a as a wetland by any of these regulatory bodies?
Uh, we looked on the their federal website, their GAS mapper.
Right.
For uh, all of it and it was not shown.
Okay. That works for me. We showed it in the minutes, Kathy. Thank you. Continue, Carrie, please.
Sure, thirteen B, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body that's marked no? Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site. Suburbans checked. Um, Reed has requested forest and urban. Make note of those. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay, fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animals or associated habitats? Listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered that's marked yes? Um, from them utilizing the EAF mapper, they've identified the blue breast darter and the long head darter.
And I'm curious uh. What? These are aquatic species, so what? What what adjacency is to to any water body are we talking about here?
It didn't identify a time on the mapper. It says. When you look at thirteen A, even when it says wetlands or other regulated water bodies, that instantly goes to no with a mapper. So it's really, I don't know what it would be identifying.
Yeah. Yeah.
River on the other side?
Is, what is it? Yeah, I'm I'm assuming the proximity from the edge of it to the river.
Yeah. In any of our site, these are not like pleasant.
Okay. I don't know what question I was on.
You're on sixteen.
Thank you. Is the project site located in the one hundred year flood plain that's marked no? Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources that's marked yes? Will the stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties that's marked no? Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems that's marked yes?
We need to describe what Tom explained before.
Yes.
Your seventeen B.
Okay, yes. Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems runoff and storm drains? If yes, briefly briefly describe.
The overflow from.
The torrent.
We don't, we don't anticipate. Really there being ever much unless there's a heavy rainstorm. Like we've been getting in the past couple days.
Yeah, the. There there's the, you you wanna mention there in the form of. The uh. Catch basins and yard drain system, French drain system. Will go to the underground storage basin. Which is a, which is a perk basin, but overflows will go in, will go into the city storm system.
You're installing that underground?
Yes.
Oh, you are.
Good.
See, I didn't think we had this one there.
Okay, sorry, I was writing that. All right, that's been noted. Eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impalement of water or other liquids that's marked no? Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property by the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility that's marked no? As the site of the proposed action or adjoining property, but the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste that's marked no?
Okay, are we all right with everything we've done here on part one? Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Move to part two. Eleven questions, Carrie has completed the answers. Two, and she's identified no or small impact for each of the eleven. I would note that the uh traffic is which question? Question five. Uh. So I'll give you a minute to look through that. And see if you have any issues with uh marking no or small impact for any of the eleven. Everybody okay with those?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, well, given. What we've learned on parts one and two, uh, we'll turn to part three. And I would entertain a motion. To make a finding. That the project will not pose any significant adverse environmental impact. And accordingly to authorize issuance of a negative declaration on the project.
So moved.
Second, Craig and Mary?
Seconded, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's Carrie. I would now entertain a motion. To make a finding that we have a completed application.
I'm moved.
Mark and JR?
Mark and JR. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?[1791.92] That's Carrie. Time for the public hearing. Uh, Jeremy, you know how these things work with public hearing? Sometimes no, nobody shows up. And, and so what we typically do if we have multiple public hearings is we put them, say, three minutes apart. Just in case nobody shows for your first one.
Okay.
And if, uh, you know, if, if the second one doesn't start for an hour, that's okay because.
Yeah.
We can start it anytime after the three minutes of the last. But the problem of it is, is if we start one at six thirty and another one at seven thirty. And nobody shows for the first one, then we're all sitting here.
Yeah, I understand.
So I, I would suggest that we, uh, set the, uh, second public hearing, public hearing for this project. At, uh, on, on the seventeenth of October at six thirty-three. Does that work for you, Jeremy?
Works for me.
The board, is that all right with the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to that effect.
Second.
Reed and Mary.
Okay, Reed and Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. That's Carrie. Okay. We will see you back here on the seventeenth.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We have a, a couple of little homework items there for us.
Hey, Tom, just for the record, can I have your permission to sign your name to both E A S and initialum?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
Do that in the minutes under both. Individually under.
Oh, that's nice of you. Thank you.
Individually under each project.
Really, thank you very much.
Yes. Wasn't that bad? When we did alligator, I think I left down here like ten o'clock out one night.
Well, you're just sitting on the end of work.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, it was a lot faster.
Yeah, I see you too. Yeah. Carrie, are you back there? I can't see.
Yes, sorry. I'm putting the file back together.
Okay, uh, continue with our agenda. Miscellaneous in communications, uh, first, first, we have the video conferencing. If I understand this correctly, uh, council is asking us to put together a resolution of our board relating to video conferencing. Or if you will, Zoom meetings. Uh, and secondly, uh, they're asking us to put together a list of procedures for video conferencing and Zoom meetings. So, uh, Carrie, why don't you tell us what you learned when you talked to council mayor's attorneys?
Okay, actually, um, we had asked Kathy to, um, do the follow-up as she'd been working with um, Tiffany Taylor, which is the council clerk and, uh, legal assistant here. So they did their research. Kathy followed up with, uh, N I com's attorney. And, um, I do believe someone else as requested. So Kathy, if you want to give the board the update and the changes that you made to the resolution and to the procedures.
One revision was made to the procedures and one was also to the resolution. After speaking with Wade Patramo from N I com. He did instruct me and let me know that the planning board may determine by a majority of the board to record or video conference at every meeting due to extraordinary circumstances of our board members. That was the only thing that we had revised on these. Just to include that language so that it included every meeting.
So, um, obviously, from my perspective, that's, that's something that I would go along with because that's how I'm doing meetings these days is Zooming. So, but, but you know, it's, it's just because I'm the chairman, I'm not, you know, I'm only one person on the board, so uh, the majority of the board will have to determine this, so uh, I throw this open to the board. Uh, how do you feel about that?
I think video conferencing is fine as long as the technology is working, which the left, ever since we've been holding meetings in here, I have not seen any problems with it. Um, I know we struggled a little bit in the council chambers initially with hearing people, but I'm fine with this as it's laid out now.
But supposedly those issues are being addressed to the new hardware that the city is installing in the council.
Actually, we have Sheldon, which is a machine that you're on right now that is addressing the issue.
I see.
That's really nice.
That is very nice. They call him Sheldon.
So what's it called?
Sheldon.
Sheldon.
Yeah, the only, I mean, again, just I don't know how well that would pick up people in the council chambers, but I'm sure if the city is investing in it.
That is what they've been using for the common council meeting?
And it's worked well.
It's worked well, yes.
Great.
Now, the addition that re- revision does not change any of the other factors, which means that you have to be, you have to, um, publish your site if you want to be, um, counted towards the quorum. So it doesn't change any of the other requirements from the template from N I com.
Yeah, and that publication has to be in the same uh, media where you issue your, uh, your meeting notices.
Notice. You do have four days, so.
In other words, the Times Herald and any radio notification you make. Also, it would be on the, uh, city, uh, website. And, and I would suggest that you know, it, it might be difficult to get the Times Herald to print, um, you know, the Zoom login information, maybe, maybe you wouldn't, I don't know, but, but, um, you know, one way to get around that would be to say that, uh, you know, it's, it's a Zoom meeting that the public can attend. And if you want to get the Zoom login information, go to the city website.
Yes, that's what is right now in the announcements to the media. It goes with the agenda and then also to let the public know they can get the link from the city website.
Yeah. In, in, in terms of Reed's other point that he was making there about as long as the, uh, technology works, um, one nice thing about this new system is that it does require that we have four members present, uh, physically. So if the technology doesn't work, then, um, there are four members that can do business.
I agree.
Did it change that with the publication? You have to also open up your location to the public?
No, but it's still, you have to open up your, your location to the public.
So you would have to open up your home to the public, Tom?
Once we have a quorum in the room, they can both vote, but they can't count towards a quorum unless they publish their location.
Right.
Okay.
And the, and the procedure specifically refers to, uh, the secondary private locations, privately owned locations. But it, it does, it's, the, the language is a little interesting because it says, uh, there's reference to, uh, uh, let me see. Can't find it in the, uh, in the resolution, but I, 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 I do see it in, uh, in, in point one in the procedures. Uh, it may make references to physical presence at one of the designated public meeting locations, plural. So it, it does make
Yeah.
Possible the look though, ha- having more than one public location simultaneously for the, uh, planning board meeting to occur at. So I just point that out. I found that interesting, that that was included. You know, I'll also note that there's a there's a, there's a requirement for uh, notifying if you're, if you're going to, uh, if you're going to Zoom, you have to notify, was it five days in advance, four days in advance?
Four days.
Four days? And, and s- since the notifications come out five days in advance, my suggestion to my fellow board members is that when you get the email from Kathy for the next meeting, for, for any meeting, that you immediately reply if you, if you're intending on doing a Zoom. Okay, so you'll meet the four day upfront meeting.
I would question that four days though, Tom, because of the language that the open government documents say. Uh, it's, uh, to, 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 or see, including disability, illness, caregiver responsibilities, or any other significant unexpected factor. And it could become unexpected within forty-eight hours or less even.
I mean, that's covered in three, uh, the procedures. Uh, if extraordinary circumstances present themselves on an emergent basis within four days of meeting. We can update the notice, it's practical.
Oh, it's, okay, the second section of that.
Yeah.
It's ironic, I had that specific four days underlined as opposed to the ones ahead of it. Okay.
Wouldn't it be practical?
Well, it, it.
So it has a contingency for that, then.
It should be.
I, I don't see that because it, it's, I mean, it still says uh, within four days of the meeting.
Meaning less than.
Right. Well, I guess that's true, so it's, it's still still allows you to get, to get sick or something.
You can still attend if you get sick, I guess.
Then be a Zoom, yeah.
You know, New York State gave us a template. Anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the template. Okay, so.
You're among many.
Yes, my question is, so matter, if you're gonna be online at any time, you have to give a four-day notice?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless, unless something comes up after the four days.
Yeah, but I, I'm just saying, you know, on a normal basis.
Standard procedure.
No, standard procedure is four-day notice. If not, then just.
We'll have to update the notice. That's what she'll have to do.
And if we don't have a quorum, we can't meet.
Then we have to reschedule.
So that gives you time to figure out what to.
Yeah, that's what I'm scrambling, call, I called everyone today to make sure, yeah.
And also.
I asked that we change the word practicable?
I don't know what, I mean, it's their wording from New York State.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is that word?
If you want to change it, then. I guess you're practicing.
Be practical.
That is.
Practicing.
It is.
It is?
It's a word.
Is able to be done or put into practice successfully.
That's funny, that's what I was just trying to find my darn app, I couldn't find my dictionary.
Everybody wants to make words longer than they.
I know.
Yeah, capable of being put in the practice. I don't care, we can change the word if we want to, honestly, it's the same thing, but if we like practical, we can do that.
Yes, you notice as soon as.
Let's go to New York State, we don't get in trouble. Something changes later.
I just, honestly, vague is good for us.
The, the other, the other thing I would note in this is that there's a requirement to videotape all these things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And believe that they have to be placed on the website, right?
A I.
Yes, our I T department, what trims it, like if there's, if we started six twenty-five.
How long do they retain?
Uh, I think for.
Uh, state records.
I would think like maybe
Seven years.
Seven years?
I don't know, Tom, we have a records and retention officer that handles that.
Yeah.
The, sir, city clerk.
One last thing that occurs to me is that there's also a requirement that, uh, that Kathy do transcripts of these meetings.
If someone requests it, yes.
So, oh, it is, it, it's not required for all?
No, it says if, uh.
It used to be, not anymore.
Upon, can, and transcribed upon request, so if someone requests it to be, then I would have to, yes.
Okay.
At the beginning of COVID, she had to transcribe all of it, and then the, um, the mandate changed.
What is the city, uh, local law, state? In that regard? Just want to make certain we're consistent with that.
Here's, is that a full-on transcribing or?
Yeah, she was doing a full-on transcription during COVID.
Not just minutes, huh?
No, it was in addition to the minutes. I was, yeah, cuz I was reviewing our transcription too.
The recordings must be available for a minimum of five years.
Five years.
And recordings must be transcribed upon request. It's under four B on the common council resolution.
It's digital.
Are you able to use the Zoom transcription?
Or B?
Oh, I don't know, I haven't tried it.
It was awful.
Kind of in the very beginning we did, but I'm thinking that it's been two years now.
Yeah, maybe they improved it.
Maybe they approved it, cuz it didn't work before, no.
Where, where is the transcription language in the resolution?
Uh, four B in the common council one.
I'm not seeing that.
So section three, paragraph four, uh, sub-paragraph B.
The second page of the local law?
It's, it says minutes must be, meeting must be recorded, recordings must be posted within five business days. Recordings must remain available for a minimum of five years and recordings, oh, must be transcribed upon request. Okay.
Do we have a clause in ours about if their governor declares a state of emergency that we can be completely video?
Well, if he does that, then that'll substitute this.
Right, right, it'll wipe out everyone.
Okay.
Right. So, um, I guess that's as much as I wanted to discuss this, but, you know. Happy to continue to discuss it. I, I guess. What you're looking for us is, is a, is a motion to, uh, to adopt the, uh, this resolution and the, and the procedures. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Reed and Mary.
Made and seconded.
Yeah, and I just want to identify it. It says resolution number, it's a blank. It'll be our first one of the year, so we should put it in zero, one dash twenty-two.
Okay. All right. And, uh, will this be available on the website?
Yes, we can add it to the website.
Yeah, cuz I'll probably lose this, this language.
We'll put it on the planning board webpage.
Tom, did you also want to do a resolution regarding, um, this, using this state code for the parking spaces for the two projects? Or do you want to do that next time? You mentioned doing a resolution or vote.
We could do it today, or we could do it two weeks from, or three weeks from today. Whatever is your pleasure.
I just get out of the way.
I mean, if we've been doing it, we stop a motion.
You stop a motion on the table, sorry.
Yeah. Um, okay, let's call this question unless there's any discussion on this. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, that's Carrie. Now, what's your pleasure with respect to these, uh, the state code on the nine by eighteen dimensionality for parking spaces?
I would suggest we do it when we're doing those projects. And it's consistent in the minutes and everything.
Right, so, uh, Kathy, just reflect that that's something that we're gonna do at the next, uh, time we meet. time we meet. I I would also note um training requirements, including the harassment um web training. And I I still have to take that myself, so um please complete that if you haven't done so.
It's not these separate procedures.
I don't know if there are any upcoming general training uh
You did it this one.
Requirements. Any other items of business? Uh, nice.
Appreciate it.
Eight forty-one, so we're probably well into fifth or sixth inning by now. Okay, I I appreciate everyone's uh patience for a long evening meeting here, but I I think that we uh we actually uh looked at all the aspects of these projects that we really needed to discuss today. And it was worth the expenditure of our of our time, so thank you all for for that. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Awesome move.
Mark and Craig.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And adjourned, you next on the seventeenth.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.